My friends. They're there upon duty. They keep trying to tell me. All you want to do is use me. Oh, but my answer, I head off of business stuff. I said, "I want to spread the news that if it feels as good getting you." Oh, you just keep on using me. Until you use me. Ah, until you use me. He sit me right down and he talk to me. Oh, and he told me yesterday. That I oughta not a little walk on me. Oh, but oh, baby, 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 baby. Will you love me again? I said, "I'm going to spread the news that if it feels as good getting you." Oh, you just keep on using me. Until you use me. Until you use me. Use me. Use me. Take advantage of using me, boy. It all depends on what you do. It ain't too bad the way you use me. Cause I show and you say you do the thing you do. I do. Everybody ready?
I have his email address. Yeah, I'll shoot you the fax back. You ready, Scott?
Yep.
Ready on the right? Ready on the left? Welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting for October the 6th, 2015. We will now reconvene from our closed session. Mr. Munus, do you have anything to report out of closed session?
We have no reportable items this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll start our meeting with our pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Lexorik.
Please rise. I'm Space Colours. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is issued by, come the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Our invocation will be led by Pastor David Mattson of Gloria Day Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and the opportunity to be together. We pray your spirit to be with this council meeting. Grant them clarity and insight and wisdom and patience that all things accomplished and done this evening would be done for your glory and for the good of Dana Point. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. We will now proceed into our presentation and proclamations. The first item on our agenda is the Business of the Month. And so I'll let Rachel Johnson do our introduction. Welcome, Rachel.
Welcome. Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Olvera and members of the council. I am pleased to announce the Business of the Month for October 2015, Big Five Sporting Goods. Tonight, we are joined by the store manager, Nick Hurdlicka, and his wife. Marking this month as their 60th anniversary, Big Five was founded in October of 1955 by Maury I. Lith and Robert W. Miller. Originally, they operated five Army-Navy surplus stores throughout California. As their business started to grow, the demand for sporting goods grew with it, leading them to start specializing in sporting goods and changed their business name to Big Five Sporting Goods in 1963. In 1971, Big Five was acquired by Thrifty Drug Stores, and in 1992, Capistrano Beach Thrifty, located on Doheny Park Road in Doheny Village, was turned into a Big Five Sporting Goods store. While continually updating the store, last month, Big Five just finished renovations to their building, including new frontage, carpet, and repaving the parking lot. Big Five Sporting Goods stores carries all your sporting needs, from fishing and camping to lacrosse and everything in between. The Capistrano Beach location employs 24 staff, three assistant managers, and one store manager. They are focused on the success of their employees as they encourage their associates to seek more education, whether it is through trade, college, or even their own manager training program. One of the things that the Capistrano Beach Big Five is most proud of is that they are one of the top 10 performing stores out of 439 stores spread throughout 13 states. This has allowed them to carry more items and higher-end items than most of the other stores. They are also well-known for their large selection of footwear that is reasonably priced. Being close to the ocean, the Capistrano Beach location is one of the few locations to carry a wide selection of water sport gear, including paddleboards, kayaks, boogie boards, snorkeling equipment, and more. Over the July 4th holiday, they typically sell out of all of these items, as well as squirt guns. Giving back to the community is a big part of Big Five Sporting Goods, as they will match any dollar that is donated through them to the March of Dimes in April and Toys for Tots in December. Locally, the Capistrano Beach Big Five helps the organization Shoe Angels, which donates shoes to 10 kids every month. On behalf of the city council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected as the Business of the Month for October. We wish you many years of continued success.
Very well. Thank you very much, Rachel. I'd like the Business of the Month to come on up. Nick? Now, one of the things, I'm going to give you an opportunity to add to what Rachel has already said for us, so you have an opportunity to address your patrons that are probably watching on TV.
Thank you. This is an honor and a privilege. A great city of Dana Point. I've worked at many locations. This is definitely one of the best locations I've worked at. I actually noticed some of my customers sitting in your council. This is, it's actually, it's awesome. It's good to see a lot of the faces I recognize, so, thank you. It's an honor and a privilege.
Glad to have you, and they will be happy to declare it on their 700 forms. So, I'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition for the Big Five Sporting Goods for being the Dana Point City Council's Business of the Month, and gladly present that to you and ask you to smile as we get some photo ops. And now, I'm going to let our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director visit too.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, we want to offer you a one-year membership to our chamber free of charge, as well as congratulate you on being Business of the Month, so congratulations. Sorry, we did this on purpose. I never do this for telling about Congress.
Very good. Congratulations, Nick. I've been there, trust me. I didn't buy anything, but I did. Okay, next on our presentations is going to be our drawing for Del Prado.
This is, last but not least, the final month that we're doing the Shop Del Prado. With our efforts between the city and our partners that included the resorts in Dana Point, we have had over $100,000 worth of receipts turned in in the last nine months. Some of the people that have turned receipts are actually in this audience, so no pressure. So, this is our last month. It's for a two-night stay at Laguna Cliffs Marriott. Okay, the winner is Corky and Carol Graff, and they shopped at Luciana's, so we will be contacting them. Thank you. I just want to take this moment to thank the city for being proactive with helping the merchants on Del Prado. It's really been a significant help for our businesses, and we appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody who participated in both shopping Del Prado and being a part of this gift program and encouraging people down there, and we'll be enjoying our grand opening on it next month. Next, I'd like, we're going to do Employee of the Month, and Public Works Director Brad Follow will introduce our selectee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, all. It's a pleasure tonight to recognize someone who came to the city about the same time I did in 2004, to work for Doug and the city council here and spend some good time on water quality. Lisa Zawoski is our water quality engineer, and in that role, she has an important part to play in one of the city council's number-one strategies for Dana Point, which is trying to make sure our ocean and beaches are pristine. So, in her role, she does a lot of different things in what has become a very technical field over the last number of years, working with things like the epidemiological study. You may know that we have the first two ozone treatment plants for runoff emanation that she makes sure are running well each and every day of the summertime and some times in the winter for North Creek. We also spend a lot of time when new development comes in town to make sure that the developers are taking care of any runoff, so it doesn't go down into the storm drain and pollute our oceans. She spends a lot of time on things like beach cleanup, working with much of the community and outreach to inform. We're working closely with South Coast Water District on trying to make sure that we reduce the water usage in town, because it does great things for water quality also. And she is probably the most efficient employee that I've ever worked with. She is really, really good and gets a lot of work done. She is just special to work with. She works with all the staff, because a lot of people help support her in our water quality mission, and so it's a pleasure, Mr. Mayor, to thank you and the council for recognizing Lisa Zawoski.
Thank you, Brad. Lisa? Employee of the Month, and like I usually do, whereas, 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 whereas. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and residents of Dana Point, I'd like to offer a thank you for being selected as Employee of the Month and all the work that you do. I want to give you an opportunity to describe your work, and I'll give you a little pro to how to do that, because I know that from where we live, we're at the end of the stream, that is everybody else's backyard's drainage. So, we may not be the problem, but we're the cure.
Yeah, I wasn't really prepared for a speech, but I do, I just feel lucky that I work for a great city with a great city manager and great support from city council and the best department, Public Works.
Now, before we get your picture and everything, you got, come on, Kyle, we've got to make sure you're in all this. Very well. Lisa, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. The last thing we have for our presentations tonight is Fire Prevention Week to OCFA, and Chief, if you want to...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for bringing attention to fire prevention this week. Smoke alarms is our message this week, and as in years past, I think it's important to get the message out that 60% of the home fire fatalities are caused from having a non-working smoke alarm in the house. So, our message this year is install, inspect, and protect. So, we're asking people to install smoke alarms in every bedroom of their house and outside the common areas of those bedrooms, and also on every level of their house. Okay? And you're going to inspect your smoke alarm once a month, see if it's working. Just tap the test button on there and just make sure it's working. Also, every, two times a year, when we change our clocks, we're going to change the batteries in our smoke alarm, and if your smoke alarm is more than 10 years old, throw it out. It's probably not good anymore. Also, the last component there is protect, and what we're saying is, protect your family, and you do that by having a meeting place outside the home, practicing drills, exit drills in the home. If you have kids, make sure they know what to do when that smoke alarm goes off, and they can get out safely. Go outside, get to your meeting place, and you don't go back inside the house once you make it outside. Okay? Thank you, Mayor. I spent many years as a fire investigator. Part of my duties were to interview the victims of residential home fires. It was always a difficult question, asking someone who just suffered a fire casualty in their house if they had a smoke alarm that worked. I never liked asking that question, because we already knew what the result was, and it's difficult for them to say, "I never checked my smoke alarm. I don't know if it worked," and they're living with the devastating consequences of not having that smoke alarm. So, please, let's make Dana Point safe and make sure your smoke alarms are all working. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate your worth of support and concern for... So, right here, we have proclamation for Fire Prevention Week for all the work that the OCFA has been doing to educate the public and the city, and for supporting our residents, we present this to you. Thank you very much, Chief. Our next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by the staff?
By the public? No, there are not.
None by the public? Mr. Chokevies for the staff?
None this evening, sir.
And by the council? Any council members want to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I would move the consent calendar, but I would like the clerk to record an extension for me for item number 15 because of a potential conflict of interest.
Very well. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
It's been moved in second, and with Councilman Schoeffel abstaining for item 15, that we approve the consent calendar. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes 5-0. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles of ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no titles to read this evening.
Very good. We now move on to public comments. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comment portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of the public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. First one I'll call is Nancy Jenkins. Please state your name and place of residence.
Thank you, Mayor Carlos Olvera. My name is Nancy Jenkins, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I want to thank the city council for taking these few minutes to listen to our plea. I'm talking about the October 17th Art Walk on Del Prado from 1:00 to 4:00 in the newly-developed Lantern District. I want to share with you five reasons that I think that you don't, and when I say you, I want all the audience. I hope we have a lot of people, because we don't have as many in the city chambers tonight, but I hope we have a lot on television. So, I would like to make an invite that you all come, but that you invite your neighbors and get them to come too. And there are five important reasons. Number one, walking around is important today. I hope this will help everybody's monitors. Number two, there are about 50 artists and four or five music groups that are going to be playing that day. What fun that will be. Some artists were featured in juried shows, such as the Festival of Arts in Laguna Beach. I don't want you to miss the opportunity to see them here in Dana Point. Number three, support our businesses on Del Prado. 100% of the businesses are involved in one way or another in this. In fact, the following businesses have secured their own artists, and they are Swack, Jack, Stillwater, Lux, The Bead Shop, Laura Sealy, Bonjour Cafe, and Killer Dana. And not, but last, not least, there are two schools on the street. These are the Dan Man and the Broadridge School. They are going to have their students, music, and visual arts perform, and these are the artists of the future that we need to support also. And number four, Del Prado has finally come alive. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. First one I'll call is Nancy Jenkins. Please state your name and place of residence.
Thank you, Mayor Carlos Oviedo. My name is Nancy Jenkins, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I want to thank the city council for taking these few minutes to listen to our plea. I'm talking about the October 17th Art Walk on Del Prado from 1:00 to 4:00 in the newly-developed Lantern District. I want to share with you five reasons that I think that you don't, and when I say you, I want all the audience. I hope we have a lot of people because we don't have as many in the city chambers tonight, but I hope we have a lot on television. So, I would like to make an invite that you all come, but that you invite your neighbors and get them to come too. And there are five important reasons. Number one, walking around is important today. I hope this will help everybody's monitors. Number two, there are about 50 artists and four or five music groups that are going to be playing that day. What fun that will be. Some artists were featured in jury shows such as the Festival of Arts in Laguna Beach. I don't want you to miss the opportunity to see them here in Dana Point. Number three, support our businesses on Del Prado. 100% of the businesses are involved in one way or another in this. In fact, the following businesses have secured their own artists, and they are Schwac, Jack's, Stillwater, Lux, The Bead Shop, Laura Sealy, Bonjour Cafe, and Killer Dana. And not, but last, not least, there are two schools on the street. These are the Dan Men and the Broadridge School. They are going to have their students, music, and visual arts perform, and these are the artists of the future that we need to support also. And number four, Del Prado has finally come alive. Walk and see its beauty now and for the potential for the future. It is wonderful. And five, the most important reason is for all of you to come and be a part of this day for our town. We've waited for this a long time, and it's going to be real festive. With this, I want to thank the people involved in a wonderful day. It truly does take a large group to do something like this. This has been a combination of all the businesses on Del Prado, the artists, the Chamber of Comrades who developed this beautiful brochure, the city of Dana Point who has been extremely helpful, Jack Loconsola who has had this vision while working both with the other businesses and the artists, plus myself and Karen Schnell who have secured many of the artists for this day. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you all there and say hi to you.
Thank you very much. Next is Penny Maynard, followed by Joanna Adrian.
Thank you. My name is Penny Maynard, and it'll be almost 20 years that I've lived in Dana Point, and one of the very first city officials I met when I came to Dana Point was the mayor. We had lunch at Bonjour Cafe, and he told me of the city's vision for the town center. And I've been patiently waiting, and I used to go to meetings, and I used to say, "I hope I live long enough to see two-way traffic come back." And thank you, thank you. It's here, and it is beautiful. I wasn't even in the area when it switched to two-way, but I came from wherever where I was just to drive up and down, and at night it looks beautiful, and I'm very, very happy, and I'm happy what the city has done, and I hope it's good for us that there haven't been problems because it's easy to navigate. The wayfinding signs are great. I mean, I know there'll be more permanent ones, but so far, they've been very good that anyone just coming to town will be able to know how to get around. And I just want to say I appreciate it, and I thank everybody, and it's been a long time coming. Patrick, too. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Joanna Adrian, followed by Barbara Johanas.
Good evening, council. I'm Joanna Adrian. I live in Dana Point. Recently, our chief of police services, Russ Chilton, held a meeting for residents of Capo Beach to address their various community safety concerns. The topics included auto theft and burglary, traffic safety, parking, vagrants loitering in the area of Camino Capistrano on street corners and around various businesses, the sober living housing facilities that are housing in residential areas near public schools, and why such facilities in number seem to increase specifically in Capo Beach. Lieutenant carefully and with honest concern addressed specifically, he cited the need for neighborhood watch programs, which work together with law enforcement lowering crime through observation and identification. Several Dana Point deputies were also at this meeting and confirmed that police patrols do cover Capo Beach 24/7 as they do Dana Point as they do Monarch Beach. Remember, we have three kind of separate communities in our city. Must be understood that Dana Point residents have our police to thank for the safety of this community, but they are a professional law enforcement agency, law enforcement agency. Ergo, there are certain restrictions that our chief and the deputies must follow under the law, starting with the federal government constitution, state government, county government, and local. A more specific review of State Assembly Bill 109 and the recently passed Prop 47 and their effects on our safety seem to be an appropriate topic, which I hope the council will review. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that. Barbara Johanas? Please state your name and place of residence.
I am Barbara Johanas, and I live in Dana Point. I have the privilege of representing the Dana Point Historical Society this evening as the president of this historical society, and I'm here to invite the city council, the city staff, the audience, both here and at home, to our 15th annual home tour, which is this Sunday, October 11th. Four of the homes that are on the tour are on the historic register. A fifth home is in the process of applying, or about to apply. There are 100 volunteers involved in the tour, including the homeowners whose six properties are on the tour. There are six properties and seven homes on tour. One property has two homes. The tour is part of the historical society's commitment to emphasize the historic elements of our city that retain the unique heritage. In this case, it's 85 years ago. It's our major annual fundraiser to preserve, share, and celebrate the city's history and acquire and better preserve historic items. And of course, we have the Dana Point Historical Society Museum here in City Hall. The money that's raised has been, in the past, put to many city and special occasion events that the historical society has organized and sponsored, which bring residents together and inform them of the value of history and our heritage. And I want to thank the city for your support in this past year in celebrating Dana's bicentennial, his 200th birthday, both on the pilgrim and with the banners that the historical society raised money for, and some meetings that we've had here at City Hall, including a maritime historian, maritime historian, who spoke here in this room about the pilgrim, and we just had the biographer Jeffrey Amistoy, who wrote Slaveish Shore, the new biography on Richard Henry Dana. So, it's been a year, and we are about to, in December, put, install a plaque on the Richard Henry Dana statue that observes his bicentennial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other requests to speak, I'll close the public hearing and move on to the agenda. Public comments, there are no public hearings. There is no scheduled unfinished business. There is no scheduled new business. So, I'll go on to staff reports. And Mr. Shokhavis for the staff.
Only one comment, and one of the things I would be remiss if I didn't thank a member of our staff who I'm going to miss seeing him out on the town center parking cars and doing other such duties as assigned Matt Sinicori. I know he was running a valet stand for Jack at Jack's Restaurants there, and, you know, I even saw somebody tip him one time. Having said that, Brad, one of the things I'd like to do is, now that Matt's going to have a lot of free time now that the town center is winding down, I want to put him to work, and what I want to do is, what we used to do when I first got here, when we would have a notice of completion on a capital improvement project, some of you will recall Matt would come in and he would do a less filling, taste great, or a before and after collage, and we always would see what type of music would Matt pick out to play in the background. So, what I'd like you to do, Mr. Fowler, is task Matt with putting together his less filling, taste great presentation for the notice of completion, and I want him to pick out some very appropriate music to play in the background like he used to, okay? Could you do that for me? And ask him why he couldn't be here tonight like the rest of the staff, so... I'm sorry. I couldn't resist, just having fun with Matt, but no, Matt's probably out in the town center right now working, but I do want to acknowledge Matt. He's a fixture out there, and I don't know what we would do without him, so that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Shokhavis, and I'm also sure that he will bring with us the lyrics and the melody Da Mama Says. Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Then I'll turn to the city council for members' reports or meetings attended. Mr. Schoeffel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to repeat what Nancy Jenkins said. Love to see everybody out on October 17th on Del Prado for what should be a very memorable three hours. I'm one of the artists who will be performing that day, so I personally hope I see you there. I'll have a jazz quartet right out in front of Jack's, and I understand that there will be some elephants flanking us as well, so it should be pretty easy to see from one end to the other, and I hope we get a pretty good crowd there. Hope to see all you guys out there, so, at some point. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fiksorik?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report. I will turn in my list of meetings before the next meeting to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Chief Abel for coming out and talking about Fire Prevention Week. One thing that I think it's important that we mention is that the fire authority does have a program where if you can't afford fire alarms, we can provide those to you at no cost, and in some instances, we'll even install them. So, I want to thank him for coming out and making everybody aware. I'm trying to look out here, I'm trying to see if I saw any of you guys at the barbecue fest this weekend. Saw a couple of you guys out there. It was a fantastic time. I wish Kevin Evans and his staff did a fantastic job putting that on. It was even better than last year's. It was a lot of fun. So, thanks for doing that, and that's all I have, and I've already turned in my list of meetings. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to reaffirm Joe's comments about Fire Chief Abel, and I'd like to mention also that I think everybody knows that, you know, change your batteries, and when time changes, check your smoke detector weekly, but very importantly, I don't think many people realize how old their smoke detectors are, so please pull down your smoke detectors in your home and check the date on them, and if they're over 10 years old, replace them. And I believe they have new smoke detectors on the market where the battery lasts for 10 years, so take advantage of those when you can. So, thank you, chief. And I will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just add, yes, I was attending and passing out the awards at the barbecue championship, and it...
Who won?
Forty-five people. Everybody won. And some won more than one prize, but there were 45 prizes passed out, and they went from first to 15th, and then to reserve, and then the champion barbecue. And you can tell that some people there take this seriously. I saw one rig there that had custom license plate, and the license number on it was prescription number four BBQ, and that's what he does. He loves the barbecue. I will be turning in my list of meetings to the city clerk, and without any further ado, this meeting is adjourned.